I think two things that we're forgetting, probably number one. And the biggest, biggest advantage we have in promoting, trying to promote Messina is M E D. Our, our electric rates are one of the lowest in the state. And companies, companies would look at that as a, as a major factor in drawing people here. The other thing is, it's not a shift. It could, but, but promoting our natural resources. This is a beautiful, beautiful place. Uh, Wattington's success with the fishing derbies. And hopefully, we, we start to cash in on that too. People come, they look, they like what they see, and they stay. You know, it's a reach, but we've got some things that we can, we can, you know, capitalize on, especially M E D.
I, I just have one more question. As a hospital employee, I'm curious to know, are you still staying close contact with the hospital? I have two. I mean, is the board, the town board still working with the hospital?
Usually, Mr. McCauley or I, or both of us, are the tenants at the hospital board meeting. I didn't make the last one.
I didn't either. I, I thought it was next week. It's earlier than March this year.
Yeah, they, they, so, yeah, the short answer is yes. Uh, I talked to Mr. Walden on a regular basis. I'm impressed with the work he's done so far. I think he's made some, he's made some needed decisions, things that should have been done, in my opinion, several years ago. Um, and I think the fresh look and the, and the new eyes, and the new blood that he has brought to the hospital have been a significant benefit. I don't know if the employees feel that way or not, but I'm impressed with what he's done thus far. He's ever perfect where nobody is. So, yeah, we are in contact with him. They answered your question directly. And, um, and I talk to the board president on a regular basis. Uh, so, we're doing what we can to stay as close contact with him as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other public comment, any other public comments? Okay, let's move on to the agenda. First up, is the fire protection agreement. Here's what I suggest, is I thought we might want to table this by, but from Walden for you. We are, uh, under John's proposal, there will be additional money for the fire department for equipment purchase. And I'm sure that the volunteers can work with it, go to determine what's the best use of that money. I believe we should request at least a one-year extension or another two-year renewal at the same amount we're currently paying eighty-two thousand dollars.
I would agree.
I don't think it's unreasonable. We're gonna put another, uh, what was John's, oh, six thousand, no, five thousand dollars for equipment. Um, I think that is a significant amount. Um, and I've not seen the numbers on calls outside the village that the fire department makes. Thankfully, we have not a lot of fires, period. I don't believe, Tom, right? Which is a good thing. Uh, but I think there's been even fewer out in the township outside the village. So, um, I would propose to this board that we, um, talk to the village and say, we'd like to extend the eighty-two thousand dollars.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, I would love one, I would agree.
I, I, I wish.
Didn't have that five thousand dollars in that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the five thousand dollars for the, the, for the compact money for equipment.
Right, so. Eighty-two plus five.
Right, so eighty-two thousand plus five thousand dollars for equipment, another compact one. That's okay?
Yeah, if whatever the, with the, the, the fire contract is eighty-two thousand plus.
Eighty-two, yes, right.
And, and we're, we're willing to give five thousand in compact money.
That's right, I understand that. But you, so you're gonna say, it's okay with both those things in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And was there a second for that?
Uh, a second.
Okay, let's have some discussion.
Yeah. Okay, so if that's the motion, you're actually making a motion for eighty-seven thousand.
Yeah, but we're approving it second.
AR, you're making eighty-two plus five?
Well, we're talking about compact funds. The eighty-two thousand is not a compact fund.
Your motion should be for eighty-two, then we also intend to do it, we also intend to include five thousand or whatever. But not eight, not eighty-two plus five?
No.
No.
Make it, yeah, is that?
Eighty-two thousand for fireworks.
Yeah, the word, yeah.
Five thousand gaming counter.
Yeah, that's fine.
For one year, maybe?
Two.
For two years, okay.
So that doesn't guarantee you need five thousand for next year too, or? So I gotta guarantee five thousand for the following year, for two years?
You wanna do two years and the five thousand dollars, or one?
Or do I do eighty-two for the contract, and this year we plan to give five?
You're saying, you're suggesting two years for the five thousand, okay. So the motion is for, to extend the fire contract for two, two more years, eighty-two thousand dollars a year. And then additional five thousand dollar allocation for sixteen out of the compact funds. And additional five thousand dollars and seventeen out of the compact funds for equipment purchases. That's what this motion says, and that's what John McCauley suggested, I believe. Okay, clear on that?
Yeah, I got a good feeling that negotiation will go well.
Oh, I think so. Any other discussion on this? Okay, all of the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, extension?
I understand, sir.
Okay, we're standing, okay. Man, that was easy. Hope the rest of the votes go thirty. Okay, uh, the, um, next up is the proposed local law. George suggests we table that.
Until we find out what.
Till we find out if we need to exceed it or not.
We can decide just before we go through, from the budget.
Does that make sense to you? All right, we'll table that. Okay, um, we have minutes, uh, that George sent to us for August nineteenth of two thousand fifteen. Uh, September third, September sixteen, and October fifth. The motion to approve those minutes.
So, second.
Motion is second. Discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Propose, same sign, extension, motion carries. Next up, a resolution to authorize the payment, uh, number one, and the final for the rescue squad payment improvements, um, in the parking lot there. The final, that change of, there was a change to the original, to the first amount, I should say, of one thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents.
It's on low, second.
Motion is second, that'll pay the payment on the, on the parking lot and close that off.
How much? Show me that frame. You're satisfied with the work that's included?
Yeah, it looks real good.
Looks real good.
Did you go see it?
I, I'm gonna drive by, yeah.
It looks nice. Maybe it one of those jobs.
Yep.
Eric, you, you guys happy with it?
Yeah, very good, figured next one's good. If there's no further discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, extension, motion carries. Next up, a resolution to accept the local highway inventory for the town of Messina presented to the town board and submitted to the St. Lawrence County Department of Highways. Frank?
Uh, I'll tell you that normally, once, once a year, I receive a, basically a sheet that says that the town of Messina has thirty-eight point four-four miles of road located in their township from the county. And basically, what I do is I verify that, sign it, and submit it back in. Um, this year, the New York State V O T has issued a new system statewide, a G I S system, geographic information system, basically using GPS satellites to tell, um, what the length of the roads are in the cities, the villages, the towns, and the counties. So there's a list that you can see, and I'm not gonna go through every one of them. Some of them have been reduced, some of them have been extended. Um, you know, every one of our roads has had some effect on it. So, with the current paper, for the current mileage is now thirty-six point three-six, so we lose, we're losing roughly two miles of road. Also attached to this, there is, there is a, there's some roads on here that are listed that, for some reason, have not shown up or don't, or not on our inventory, haven't been in our inventory. Um, one of them is, well, the first one is, is the Bailey Road is actually, was, uh, they said it was one point two-one miles long, now it's actually one point four-seven. So, that's an additional, uh, additional mileage that we can pick up, point two-six. And then another one is, we never got credit for the Bailey Road. As you know, the Bailey Road is in half of, is in part of Messina, village, and the town. Uh, we never got, we haven't had a credit for point two-nine tenths of a mile for the Bailey Road. And then on the Dennison Road, they call it, there's a spur that goes off the Dennison Road that connects to one thirty-one. Well, we weren't getting credit for that. So there's another, it's not a lot, but it's point oh-nine. And then, if we are taking that bolt launch over and maintaining it, we should get credit for it. And that's point oh-five. So what that does, it changes the number to thirty-six point seven-six miles, so we lose one point six-eight miles. And, uh, if you read the letter, we highly suggest you accept what they have. Um, what it really, what it affects, and like I told you in the previous meeting, is that it affects our chip dollars. And nobody could give me a good explanation of losing, uh, one point six-eight miles, how much money that is. Uh, but what I need is, in order to accept the changes, to give us the additional mileage, I need a resolution from the board saying, they're basically accepting the responsibility to maintain those roads and, and, you know, to maintain. We already, we already do the Dennison spur, we already maintain that road.
Is your recommendation then to take their number?
Yeah, they take the number with the additional additions on there, the three-point.
You wanna add what you've come up with?
Yes, well, the, we should, I'm gonna submit it saying that we have thirty-six point seven-six tenths of a mile of road, not the thirty-six point three-six tenths they're saying.
Before this was measured, how, was it a wheel? Somebody walked in, or?
Assuming it was a wheel or some point, it was, I, I don't know, it was, the data always showed up in my office once a year.
So is everybody getting a reduction in the road?
Yeah, St. Lawrence County's going down two point five percent because of the last sheet here. There's a lot of roads disappearing in the state.
So is it, yeah. So the chip money is at a pot that's, uh, distributed, as much as roads you have?
By mileage, yeah.
Okay, by mileage, but it's one pot of money?
Yeah.
So should I equal out to be the same if everybody's taking the same hit percentage?
Well, that's.
In theory, in theory.
That's the question I, when all the New York State D O T, the woman, the person, I shouldn't say, the person I talked to could not give me that answer because she says there's a lot of things that go into it, and she didn't really have a good understanding of how that all gets figured out. So, she couldn't give me an answer.
But I doubt seriously the dollars per mile is gonna stay the same. The state's gonna look at this as a savings.
Of course, that's why they're doing it.
So we will, we'll lose, as will the county, as well as every other town, state.
Yeah, as I said, as I said in the, in the last meeting, or whenever this came up last time, one of the things we talked about at the County Supervisor's Association meeting was that the state has measured this with GPS. Doesn't take into account hills, doesn't take into account cur, well, I suppose curves, it has to, but there, there are different, different elevations, uh, up, ups and downs a lot for mileage, right?
Yeah.
Doesn't take that into account. So, um, I believe it's an effort by the state to, uh, hold more money and provide assistance to us.
So obviously, I, I tried to look and make sure we were getting credited for everything we had. And, and it's, obviously, it's not a lot, but it's, it's a little more than what they were saying we had.
But here's what I'm confused by. So you want us to, no, I shouldn't take it easy. So you want us to pass a resolution sending a letter that you think the county doesn't want, saying that our, their numbers aren't right?
No.
No.
I'm saying, I want a resolution passed that you're agreeing that the, uh, the additional miles that they added on to the Freego Road, we will maintain. The two point two-nine tenths of the mile of the Bailey Road that we will now get credit for, we will maintain. And the Dennison Road spur, a point zero-nine tenths of a mile, we will maintain. And then, if we're going to have the bolt launch, they're considering that mileage, point oh-five, that we're gonna maintain. We might as well pass a resolution because we maintain them anyways.
Yeah.
And get, and get credit for that.
The number they gave them plus those additions.
They're saying in their letter that I can't on my own say, yeah, I'm gonna do that. It says, you have to pass a resolution from your board that you're accepting responsibilities and maintenance of those roads. And we already do those roads. We already, we already paved to the end of the, uh, the Freego Road. We already take and maintain the spur on the Dennison Road. We already, we just paved, paved the Bailey Road. The only one we haven't done anything with yet is the bolt launch because we just got it. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking for, asking for a resolution accepting those, those mileage back into our mileage.
And you're gonna maintain the bolt launch if we pass this?
We are maintaining the bolt launch.
Okay, good.
So, is, is that, is that back road around, is that, what is it, or?
Yes.
What is it?
That's a Haverstock road.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, we've had enough of it.
Another comment I have is, I think the people in the county need to take some training on how to write letters and stuff. I, you know, failure to complete return this packet to the Department of Highways by this date may negatively impact your chip's funding for the coming year. So, in other words, you know, take this or leave it. It's what this Don Chambers is saying.
He's the highway superintendent.
Yeah, yeah, take it or leave it, in other words.
I can argue that his letter rang pretty good, he said what he thought. It's, it's, we may not like it, but we know where he stands, right? They're gonna leave it.
It's, uh, it's affecting a lot of villages, towns, counties, not just in St. Lawrence, all over, there's been a lot of talk about it. Some places are losing, there, there, I've heard of places losing five miles.
Brea's lost four and a half miles.
Okay, a resolution up, uh, next up, to renew the court officer contract of the village of Messina. It costs not to exceed five, five thousand dollars, expiring in twelve thirty-one sixteen. As you saw in the packet, uh, the mayor said that they don't need an increase, so, they don't want an increase, it's wonderful by me.
So move.
Motion and a second. Discussion, all the favors, favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, extension, motion carries. Resolution to authorize the purchase of a new, uh, two thousand sixteen International seventy-six hundred dump truck at a cost of two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars. And one new two thousand sixteen Ford F, uh, one sixty pickup truck, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars on state contract. Authorize the town supervisor to sign the lease purchase agreement with leasing, with a company called Leasing Two for both vehicles. For total, not to exceed two hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars for five years, a lease at an interest rate of three point zero-six percent. I mean, I know it's. Motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, extension, motion carries. Uh, we've got a couple additions as well, a couple pages of additions. Um, first up is, um, a resolution to accept the proposed fee quote from Bronker, Tillot, Rossi, Cahill, and Associates for a self-contained trial-ready appraisal for Messina, uh, Messina, Hardhaven Shopping Center, versus the town of Messina. Uh, what this is, we had, um, had Mark Magnamere from, uh, what's his new name?
Barkley something.
Barkley Damon, uh, had, had, has previously dealt with, uh, an appraiser, a commercial appraiser, um, who has done all the other work on, on the other tax challenges that we've had. Hardhaven has challenged their assessment, they believe they're overtaxed. We disagree. Um, the, uh, appraisal firm we normally use is not available. So he is suggesting that we hire this new company, Bronker, Tillot, Rossi, Cahill, and Associates. Um, and the amounts are thirteen thousand dollars to do the actual appraisal, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to do the actual appraisal. And then to review the opposing appraisal and trial preparation. So if it goes to trial, then we'll pay them a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to, to review the opposing appraisal and, and prepare for trial. Then we'll provide them with, uh, court testimony at a rate of two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, plus three hundred dollars for travel, uh, expensive travel expense. So we need to pass this resolution to engage this new company to, uh, to do this work for us.
I understand the court-ready appraisal. Have we had negotiations, has Mark engaged in negotiations with them, or just preliminary stuff?
He has been trying to, and we have not been successful thus far.
I'm not surprised.
So we are preparing like we're going to court.
Which is a court-ready appraisal, which we may not have to use.
Right, but we'll have it, it may help with negotiation certainly.
Yeah, that's.
We discussed this before, I'm sorry, I'll, we discussed this before, and, I mean, we're, if we take ahead on the, on the, uh, tax assessment, we're the least amount to be affected. The school is the largest, in the county, after them, so, I mean, I guess the school at one time did have an account to help us out with the, uh, funding this?
We, we should, we should investigate all the taxing entities to help us defray this cost, especially the school. Because we always, we, we, the reason that we hold out for no rebates, as soon as they file, the rebate clock starts. All right? And obviously, the greatest burden falls on the school. Now, the school in the past, the school in the past has agreed that they would shoulder some of this cost. I think with, with Pat Grady, Pat Grady has been a town supervisor, he understands tax surcharge and this stuff. So I think, if you approached him.
And I have talked with him very briefly about the fact that the town pays, always pays, carries the burden.
Yeah.
For these legal fees. Uh, I don't think there would be strong opposition to the school to helping out.
And like Sam said, you're absolutely correct. At one time, they had a fund dedicated to this.
And a rider class, uh?
Well, even before that, before that.
And, uh, I mean, it's a shot in the dark, but I ask the county as well.
What about the village?
What about the village?
I, I think the school.
This is in the village, yeah, so they don't get hit, they can tell.
Okay, we get that. So is somebody having a motion to accept this with the addition that we approach the school, the county, and the village to help with the cost?
We don't have any choice to it.
What?
Any choice.
To approve it? But you, are you, if you're making the motion to approve it with the addition of asking the town, the village, and the county, then we need to include that in the motion?
I'd agree, but is that contingent upon, in other words, if they say no, then are we gonna go forward with this?
Are there time constraints to get this done tonight, or can we wait and see what?
I believe he would like to get this process started.
He says in the letter that he'd like to get it started.
Would like to or needs to.
I'm not sure what the answer to that is, honestly, but, uh, my, here's my concern. We say, okay, we're not gonna prove it tonight, we're gonna go to the town, the village, the county, the village, and the school. Then they gotta go to their board meeting next month. Uh, and how long is that gonna take?
Well, if we already approve it, then we've already committed our thirteen, uh,
Yeah.
our money to it, and they'll say, well, they're, they're gonna pay for it anyway, so why, why are we doing that?
Well, there, there, there is that possibility. I, we tend to think they would not think that appropriate, I agree.
How much dialogue have they had? I mean, how many times has he tried to get in contact?
Many times.
Many? Define many, I mean, it's been two years.
With, 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 with David?
Yeah. This one's been around for a while.
Yeah, he's, he's.
That's not saying two years, right?
At one point, they weren't even responding, so.
I think it's like upwards of two years, so we gotta do something, right?
The latest response was, uh, from them, well, I gotta go back to my client. I'm waiting for direction.
That's what I'm trying to say, it's been two years, so we gotta go.
For us, yeah.
Is this the one they wanted, like, five thousand dollars or something? Is this, that, are they? Are they the ones that wanted it lowered to like five thousand dollars or something?
No, Hardhaven, no, no, they, they wanted.
You wanted to write a check to them?
No.
That was racist.
Yeah.
That was racist.
Was that, that was racist?
Yeah, they wanted to do a thousand.
A thousand.
You wanted to write a check to them?
You, you, you almost said, yeah, you can't embarrass those people. Um, no, this is, uh, they're at, uh, four point two million, I think you wanna go down to two and a half or something like, it's a crazy reduction. I mean, the place is booming with business and full of capacity, and so, um, and.
I would put this as a form of a motion.
Okay? Do you wanna include the, asking the school, or do we have to do that? Okay? All right, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, we've already had, all the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, extension, uh, motion carries.
Can you get a letter from them if they do not want to participate? Can they do, respond, inform the provider?
Yeah, I can do that, I'll send them a letter.
Please, thank you.
Joe, why don't, why don't you send them a copy of this?
Yeah, I can, yeah, I'll just cover it, yeah. Okay. All right. Uh, permission for the secretary of bookkeeper to open six new checking accounts at Community Bank for the following airport projects. One removes, uh, structure removal phase five off airport and security fence construction. Uh, reconstruct the general aviation access road, this construction, again. Replace the snow removal equipment, that's a tractor. Uh, taxiway A rehab and lighting design, so that's for the design of the project. Uh, runway nine-two-seven, a home run replacement, that's an equipment replacement. And drainage improvements, design and permitting force and drainage improvements we need to do at the airport. So this is just giving you permission to create those accounts for these purposes.
So move.
Motion is second.
Second.
Motion is second. Um, discussion, all the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign, extension, motion carries. Uh, discussion, the possible bond issue to reverse the town share of the teehanger project. We had some discussion a while ago. Um, Nancy brought up the idea, could we bond for the value of the teehanger? Uh, which, and correct me if I misstate, Nancy. What she found out is, we were able to bond for the amount that we paid for the teehanger. So for our local portion, which is still about four hundred thousand dollars. So what this would in essence do is, if we went out and bonded for that money, we would get that money back in our account. We would make payments going forward of the bond, obviously. Later, we give us some cash, uh, that we could use to replenish some fund balances and use for other purposes. Right?
I wouldn't have a problem with that, as long as the rents to the teehanger pays the payments for the bond, so it's self-sustaining.
You already have it in the budget, that's rather a thought.
Yeah.
This, two thousand sixteen.
What, like, sorry, Nancy, didn't you?
We budgeted teehanger rent already as revenue from our general costs, so.
The new T.
I mean, so if we bond for this, and that's another cost we have going forward, year after year, so it was farther in the hole.
Yeah, it'll be additional year expense, but it'll increase your cash, your cash on hand. So, you know, you gotta, there's obviously positives and negatives to both.
And if we need some funds somewhere, yeah, I guess that would be a, a good way to go, at a little rate, but, uh.
So your thought is, we should wait, Sam?
Well, I mean, well, let me see, this is the first I've seen the, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, it's good. We discussed this information.
It's funds we don't need at this time, right? We're paying seventeen thousand dollars in interest in the first year.
Take a look at our fund balance, tell me that we don't need it. Next year, we're not gonna have anything.
No.
We'll do one more reduction in tax rate, and then we're gonna be out.
But this is gonna cost us, uh, thirty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it is a trigger that you could pull.
You worry about the thirty-two thousand?
At any time, other than you'd be risking interest rates and things like that.
Although, given the most recent news in the economy, it seems unlikely interest rates are going up any time soon. Employment numbers are down again.
There is a time limit as well, because what the state does not wanna see is you put on a project, you spend the money, and then all of a sudden you say, oh, we don't have any money left, which is kinda what's happening to us. So, they, they're, they wanna, they wanna see that you are planning ahead and that you are setting aside money to use for the project to be replenished at the beginning. I mean, really, that's what they look for. They look for that you planned ahead and already have your resolution in place to borrow the money when the time comes when the project's finished. Um, so you can't wait too long, because then the state looks at it as, we're planning on our part, and they don't go along with that sort of thing. So, our.
And, and, I mean, it's interrupt by saying, they don't go along with it. And then we get a criticism from the cops, or, and that's about it?
Well, we may not be able to get the serial bond, depending on the opinion of our council. And they are saying.
If our rating changes or something like that.
But their fiscal advisors and our, or our parents and stuff, when they turn it, they're saying, if you're gonna do this, you better do it before, in this fiscal year.
Okay? That's the recommendation.
Their recommendation, right.
So next year, we have the same tax gap, how does it work with another thirty-two thousand dollars for this? In, um, seventeen thousand interest, fourteen thousand, or almost fifteen thousand principal?
Somebody else is gonna have to take a reduction.
Yeah, that's a good question, that is a great question. Do we need to bond for anything, right? Does this money have to be used at the airport?
No.
Okay. Do we need to bond for anything right now?
In my opinion, we need to bond for your town drive.
Do we need, uh, what's, what's going on with the water?
Nothing.
You need?
We're waiting, that's not true, we're waiting on the, the, our application to the state for funding, so.
Okay. So if we don't have to use it at the airport, we're gonna have to bond next year, probably. For one or two or both of those things you just mentioned, right? We, we wanna do, we have to do the water, okay? So, so, then, so then the only question you've got is, you know, is this bond rate better or worse than what it's gonna be when you have bond anyway? Now, we can use this for water, Nancy?
It can go back in your general fund, you're replenishing your general fund.
So can we take, can we take money out of the general fund to put it toward the water project?
Well, you can, but the water project would then owe the general fund back.
Yeah, yeah, so some of the payback could come back to A-Fund?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and same thing would be true with the highway garage?
Yeah.
The, the B, B fund or DB fund would pay back the A-Fund if we, if we use it.
Well, all capital projects aside from water and sewer, um, are charged to the general A-Fund.
Okay.
Um, water and sewer is charged to the districts that it flows.
Right.
But we can lend to them.
Yeah, so if we have to, if, if, we know we're gonna bond for the water, next, we're either, we're either gonna get hopefully some grants, we're gonna have to bond for something. So this would just get that started, really, is what it would do.
I don't know, though, about water and sewer. Usually, they are specific, so I don't know if you could lump that all in together. I think water and sewer, because they're exempt, they're exempt bonds, they call them.
You can't use taxpayer money for it, it has to be fees from the water district.
Well, that's why I asked the question, can the A-Fund pay the water district four hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and two dollars?
I mean, it could lend it.
To, to reduce the amount that has to be bonded by the district. You put that capital fee into their, into their bills, that they would then have two capital fees for the water project. The amount to pay back this loan, and the amount to pay back whatever additional bonding we have.
And generally speaking, though, when you lend from fund to fund, it's supposed to be paid back in, in one fiscal year.
Oh, okay.